I'll call the order that December 12, 2016, regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak tonight during citizen comment period, their stand-up sheet in the back. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item three is a proclamation for Lee Lodge, and I don't think we have anybody here tonight from Lee Lodge, so I presented it last week, so we're good to go on that. Number four is matters from council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring to the table tonight?
I guess I'll just give a quick update on questions I've had of staff for the de-icing program, in that this request have been made, purchases have been, and the parts have been ordered. It comes from various vendors, and so the arrival of those come at different times, and as such, and so I just wanted to manage expectations a little bit, is that there may be a winter event before that equipment is ready to be placed into service, but we believe that, at worst-case scenario, it'd be available after January the 30th. But certainly, our awesome public work staff will do all they can to get that in service as the parts become available, and so again, just manage expectations a little bit.
In other words, we just want rain until February.
We just want rain until February, exactly.
Takes care of that. Item five is to receive a presentation from Diddwick and Company, Certified Public Accountants of the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June the 30th, 2016. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd indulge me just a second, one of our TV crews, Cheryl Hildebrand, is an engineer in our IT department and is celebrating her 39th year anniversary with the city as of today. She came to work here 39 years ago, in 1977. And Cheryl is a diligent employee, but she's also a lot of fun to work with. And on a personal note, Cheryl and I were in Ms. Driver's first grade elementary school class together, and back in the day, I'm not going to say how far back in the day, but, so anyway, I wanted to acknowledge that. That's quite a career in public service.
Well, I think I remember the first day she came to work, because she started in the police department, and I was a police officer at the time, so, and I won't tell you how, what her age was then, so you could do the, but she is a fantastic person, a fun person to work with, and I'm glad she's stayed with us and hope she continues to stay a little bit longer.
Amen. Mr. David Diddwick is here with his team from Diddwick and Company present the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, for fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. And while the CAFR contains a great wealth of financial information, and I'm sure the city council will want to explore some of that, especially as it may pertain to a change in fund balance, and the portion of fund balance, unassigned portion of fund balance that you may reallocate to capital projects, the primary purpose of the CAFR is to assess if the city has fairly reported its financial position in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and then secondarily, the annual audit process can and does evaluate internal financial practices and controls. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Diddwick.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and the citizens of Waynesboro, we're delighted to be here tonight to review the FY '16 comprehensive annual financial report for the city of Waynesboro. With me tonight are three of the individuals that spent extensive time on this engagement. Randy Huffman, to my left, manages the engagement. Katie Gerbl, she and Randy put this report together that we'll be discussing tonight, and Dustin Diddwick, yes, there is a relation, is our firm's accounting and auditing manager. The process of auditing is very important, but it's also important to understand what an audit is by an independent firm. An audit is rendering an opinion that the financial statements that are presented by an organization are fairly presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles of the United States. What it is not is that every penny is in the right place, and what it's also not is it's really not a performance review of the city, meaning the purpose of an audit is not to determine whether the services that the city provided were necessarily provided efficiently or inefficiently, but that in all material respects, the financial report of the city is correct. If I could turn your attention to page one of the audit report, this is our independent auditor's report where we are stating that, and if you go to the bottom of that first page, this is our opinion. This is what you're paying us to do, and we arrive at this opinion by a series of testing and by meeting professional standards on a sample basis in reviewing transactions and internal controls of the city to make sure they are in accordance with standards. If I could then turn your attention to page 3A, this is the city's management discussion and analysis. I find this particular part of this report to be extremely beneficial. This was put together by your finance department. It is a place where you are able to analyze the overall operations of the city financially, and also compare it to prior-year activities. So I encourage all of you to look at this in detail. I'm now going to turn the report over, or the presentation, over to Katie. As I said earlier, she is one of the people that put this report together. I appreciate Katie being here tonight, because she's suffering with a really bad cold, but she is the most knowledgeable with these numbers, so Katie.
I'd like to start the financial portion of this presentation on page four with exhibit one. This is the statement of net position for the governmental activities and the business-type activities, as well as the component unit school board. These statements are presented on the full accrual basis, they will include all of your capital assets and the long-term debt of the city. If you'll remember, last year, we had GASV 68 implementation, which required us to report the full net pension liability, and we also had a large adjustment to net position that year. So now that we have two years presented under GASV 68, these statements will be more comparable to the prior year. The main change is a slight decrease in your liabilities just due to the current-year debt repayment. I also want to point out, there is a negative unrestricted net position in the governmental activities, $6 million. The reason that's presented in the primary government column is because the debt associated with the component unit school board assets is the responsibility of the city and reported by the city, but those capital assets are reported in your right-hand column for the school board. If you will look at exhibit two on page five, or statement of activities, this will break out by function and program, the different expenses and revenues of the city. The overall change in net position for the governmental activities was $6.3 million, which may seem like a lot, but I don't want you to think that that's a change in the city's cash balance for fiscal year 16. Of that $6.3 million, 5.2 million of that is your reduction in debt when compared to the prior year, so it's not a cash change. On pages six and seven, we have the balance sheets for the governmental funds. These statements focus on the near-term assets and liabilities of the city. They do not include capital assets and long-term debt. I do want to point out that the self-funded health insurance fund is a new major fund for fiscal year 16, and that's mainly because it was a new fund in 15 with only six months of activity, and this was the first year with a full year of activity, and due to those material revenues and expenditures, it was required to be reported as a separate column as a major fund. The ending fund balance for the governmental funds was $20.7 million. This is a $2 million increase from the prior fiscal year. I do want to point out the unassigned fund balances of the general fund also increased. That increase was 1.2 million, but the majority of that was made up of the .7 million of unspent education funds that were returned from the school board, but also from the .8 million increase in fund balance in the general fund. That all went to unassigned, because it is not assigned in other individual funds. We can look at the increase, the $2 million increase, in more detail on, sorry, wrong page, on page nine, exhibit five. This is the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balances for the governmental Your overall revenues for the governmental funds increased $3.9 million from the prior fiscal year. This was mainly due to $3 million increase in the self-funded health insurance fund, which is contributions from employees and retirees into that fund. Total expenditures of the governmental funds actually decreased $15.7 million, but of that amount, 19.5 million of that amount was from the refunding of debt in the prior year. But there's also an increase in expenditures in the government, general government administration due to that self-funded health insurance fund, and claims that were paid out by the city for those health insurance claims. The overall net change in fund balance for the governmental funds was a positive $2 million to end at $20.7 million. Excuse me. On page 11, we have the budget-to-actual comparison for the statements of revenues and expenditures. I'm not going to go into detail on these individual items. I do want to refer you to the finance department's management's MDNA, especially page 3I. That will give you a breakout of specific changes between budget and actual. But overall, your revenues had a $1.4 million favorable variance, your expenditures had a $2.1 million favorable variance, and the final budget had originally projected a $3 million use of fund balance, so taking into account those favorable variances, we can come back to the actual .8 million increase in your fund balance. On pages 12 to 13, we have the statements of net position for the proprietary funds. These are the enterprise funds, the business-type activities. There's only two items that I really want to point out that were major changes from the prior year. Your liabilities decreased $1 million due to current-year debt repayments, but also in the other enterprises fund column, we have the stormwater fund that was new for fiscal year 16. It was not material enough of a fund to be reported as a major fund, so it's lumped in there with the other enterprise funds, such as the garbage and the landfill. On page 14, exhibit nine, we have the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position for these proprietary funds. The overall operating revenues increased $1.1 million, but that was mainly all due to the stormwater fund charges for services that were collected, that were new this year. You will notice that the only enterprise fund that had a negative change in net position was the sewer fund, was a negative .6 million, but the city has already addressed this issue and has increased the sewer fees for fiscal year 17 to cover these operating expenditures of that fund. On page 17, exhibit 11, this is the statement of fiduciary net position for fiduciary funds. These are the funds where the city is the fiscal agent, and those funds are held on behalf of other parties, such as the first aid crew and the criminal justice training academy. Then, starting on page 18, we have the notes to the financial statements. I'm not going to go through these in detail, but there are specific ones related to the capital assets and long-term debt and net pension liability that will provide further detail of the numbers presented. On pages 61 to 64, we have the required supplement information. This is related to the net pension liability and other post-employment benefits that the city is required to report, and the liabilities they are now required to report in the face of the statements. These relate to all the city employees, as well as the school non-professional employees, because the professional employees are covered by the state. For pages 65 on, that will include all the combining schedules and individual fund schedules. Everything rolls forward to the statements we've already looked at, but if you would like more detail on individual fund, as well as the separate school board funds, all of that detail and supplemental information can be found there. I will now turn it over to Randy for the compliance section.
If you would, flip to pages 122 and 123 of the report. This is our report on the internal control over financial reporting required by government auditing standards. This report identified one material weakness that we'll discuss in the schedule of findings and question costs. On page 124 to 125 is our report on compliance for each major program required by the uniform guidance. We issued an unmodified report as the city complied with all the compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on the major programs that were tested during the current year. On pages 126 and 127 is our schedule of findings and question costs. Item 1G lists the federal programs that were tested as major programs during the current year. Also, I will draw your attention to item 1H, as the uniform guidance replaced the OMB circular A133 required by a single audit. The uniform guidance also changed the threshold for the type A, type B programs that are considered major. The threshold used to be 300,000, and under the uniform guidance, it's now 750,000 to determine the major programs. Item 2 notes the finding related to the financial statement audit. Finding O8-1 is a repeated material weakness due to the material adjustments being necessary for the city records to be in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also, under item 2 is the city and the school board's response to this finding. On pages 128 to 130 is the city's schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This lists each federal granting agency and the amount of federal expenditures for each program for the current year. I'll now turn it back to David for closing remarks.
So I'm very pleased to be able to report that we were able to issue the unmodified opinion. Some of you may have heard of this referred to previously as a clean opinion. I also want to compliment the city staff, from the manager's office right through, we had no difficulty dealing with anyone and being able to obtain the information we needed to complete the audit, and they demonstrated tremendous professionalism during our processes. I'd like to see if there's any questions from any members of council at this time.
Anyone have questions? No, sir.
What I would, what I strongly recommend that you do is if you, in reviewing this in more detail, if you ever have questions regarding the finances of the city, you have a very professional finance department here, and I encourage you to consult with them. If, in fact, you would like us to meet with you at any time to give you any additional guidance, we'd be happy to do that, but you're very fortunate here to have excellent people on staff. It's a, it's a real privilege to be able to serve the city, and an honor to continue after so many years of service. And again, I want to thank each member of the city staff, the school board, and the EDA for their help in completing this process, and I certainly wish all of you a very happy holiday.
Same to you, thank you. Item 6A is to consider approving an increase to the city pay scale to reflect inflationary factors and resulting increases to the consumer price index occurring over the last eight years. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, at the November 28 meeting, you received a recommendation from me to increase the maximum compensation for each grade of the city's pay scale by 10.5%. And I think it's important to stress, for your benefit and for those in the listening public, including our employees, that what I'm presenting tonight and what I've asked you to consider affects only the maximum pay element for each grade. Current pay grades and associated scales were established in 2008 and have not been adjusted for inflationary or other market factors since. This recommendation, or my recommendation, is further supported by the implementation of VRS contribution requirements in 2012, which were accompanied by a compensation increase for affected employees of 5.27% to keep those affected, affected employees whole. In the period of time since 2009, the Bureau of Labor Statistics indicates that the CPI or the factor of inflation that has affected the economy ranges from about 12% to 14.3%. That fact, or those facts, and coupled with the VRS implementation, in my view, warrant the adjustment to the pay scales to the benefit of our employees, thereby improving our ability to attract and retain qualified employees. It is important to note as well that if council approves this recommendation, does not require an adjustment to the budget. The increases contemplated in the current fiscal year have been factored in, and really, what this does is it allows employees to realize or increase their potential earning power going forward. If you have any additional questions or require any clarification, I'm happy to respond to questions you may have.
Any questions?
Now, just to reiterate too, because I think I'd asked the question about the consumer price index rate of inflation, so the 12%, by comparison nationally, it's been 12 to 14.3%, and your recommendation is an increase to, of that upper threshold of 10 and 1/2%.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve a 10.5 increase to the maximum compensation level for the city pay scale?
Before we vote, Mayor, I am a city employee, just to let everyone know, and I've spoken with our city attorney, and because this affects everyone and not just my department, then we feel that I don't need abstain from this vote.
All right, great. So is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any other comments or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 6B is to consider approving the closure of Main Street on May the 6, 2017, from 5:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., as requested by representatives of the Blue Ridge Soapbox Derby in order to conduct the 2017 Soapbox Derby race. Mr. Hamp.
So Mayor Allen and members of council, as business activity has increased on the Main Street corridor, conducting and supporting the event in that location requires, I think, enhanced levels of communication, coordination, and accommodation of businesses operating during the event. Staff has presented these considerations to Soapbox Derby representatives, who have responded with and expressed willingness to modify the logistics and the manner in which the event is conducted. More specifically, the organizers have agreed to reduce their street closure request to Main Street from Maple to Main, excuse me, from Maple to the Main Street Bridge construction limits, to communicate directly with impacted business owners well in advance of the event date, and finally, to facilitate crossing stations on Main Street, allowing spectators and visitors to the downtown business district, more convenient access to businesses on Main Street. Generally, beyond those accommodations, which are certainly appreciated, I would encourage the Soapbox Derby representatives to strengthen existing relationships with businesses downtown where they exist, and also establish, work to establish relationships with business entities that they may not presently have communication or relationship with. I would tell you that, or suggest to you, that the ability to utilize Main Street as a venue for the event in future years will depend on the ability to recognize and mitigate the impacts of street closures and the event have on businesses operating while the event's going on. The Soapbox Derby is a tradition in our community, and I think contributes to our identity and health as a community. Certainly, the benefits to the youth and the families who participate in the event are valuable, and we want to recognize those, as well as the volunteer effort and contribution that Soapbox Derby event organizers apply to the success of the event. I think likewise, in this environment where our downtown is increasing in its thriving activity, increasing investment, it's important to, at the same time, recognize the contributions and the importance of the businesses downtown that they make to our economy and the community. So having said that, I'd note that the street closure requests have been reduced simply to the Main Street, as not reflected in your application, and it'd be my recommendation that you approve the request.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Are there any questions from council members? If not, is there a motion to approve the street closure?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other comments or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? I serve on that board in a roundabout way. They have their meetings at nights, and I have a conflict, so I haven't been able to attend any meetings over the last couple of years, and I can't really understand why they keep me on their board, but I like to go help, and I do volunteer for them in any way I can, but I will abstain from the vote tonight. So, all in favor of approving the closure of Main Street as requested, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all abstain. So, it carries four, four and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7A is to consider adopting a resolution in support of Virginia's Certificate of Public Need Program for Medical Facilities, as requested by Augusta Health. Mr. Hamp.
As noted, this request comes to us from Augusta Health. The COPN, or Certificate of Public Need Program, is a process by which medical facilities are approved and licensed by assessment and confirmation of a community or market's need or demand for a specific facility. According to Augusta Health, the CP, excuse me, the COPN program has provided an effective regulatory structure since 1973, and essentially, the process is intended to prevent the oversupply of a particular facility in a market, and in doing so, promote financial stability and viability among providers in that market. There are 36 states in the, among, in our nation that operate COPN programs, including the District of Columbia. Last year's General Assembly session saw 18 pieces of legislation aimed at reforming or deregulating the COPN process. COPN deregulation or elimination poses a threat to the financial viability of Augusta Health and may drive Augusta Health and other similarly sized organized hospitals to consolidate. Medical services delivered by hospitals vary in profitability, and hospitals utilize the proceeds from those more profitable service areas to offset services in areas in which they incur loss or have poor margins. Further, more than half of the consumers of hospital services are, excuse me, more than half of the services provided by hospitals are paid by Medicaid or Medicare, which while reliable third-party payers, those payers do not reimburse typically at the full cost of the service delivered. Losses associated with emergency room and indigent care are of particular concern for hospitals, including Augusta Health. So, if proponents of COPN elimination or deregulation are successful, Augusta Health could lose the profitable benefit of providing services such as ambulatory surgery and imaging services, which would produce financial stress for the institution, consumers, and presumably the community. This evening, Mr. Alex Brown, who is Vice President of Legal Affairs and Governmental Council for the hospital, is present should you have any questions related to the request. But council's asked to consider the resolution in support of the position, and if council approves the resolution, that resolution will be used in communication from the city and by the hospital to delegates in the General Assembly as they prepare for the upcoming session.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Hamp or Mr. Brown here? Mr. Martin?
I've got some questions. I'm not even sure how to answer them. I know enough about this, but I've read a little bit on this, and I know there was apparently some movement to at least reform or modify or something this, and I think we ought to hear something, you know, from that side of the issue, not just from the hospital, before the city takes a position.
Do you know where you go get that information from?
I don't know. Maybe we should talk to some of our delegates, or, you know, what their experience was, why they, what they felt about it, or why they thought it was introduced, or in last, last year's session?
So, there were?
No, the last hospital function that invited all the cities and county representatives come, they covered this pretty well, and I was pretty impressed with their, their point of view, and seemed like something we need to consider, but I would like for you to cover a couple of those things.
Sure. I'd just point out, the County Augusta Board has supported this resolution, the City of Stanton has supported this resolution, and we greatly appreciate you taking it under consideration this evening. As stated by Mr. Hamp, you know, Augusta Health and healthcare in general is not a free market, as kind of portrayed by some of the delegates in the previous session. Augusta Health is required to be open 24/7, provide for emergency, disaster, relief preparedness, and, as Mr. Hamp indicated, about 60% of our reimbursement is below our cost. So, the greatest concern for our hospital would be for a private institution to come and cherry pick some of the higher reimbursing commercial insurance services that would be detrimental in our ability to continue to provide some of these vital services for our organization and our community that are not provided at cost. In 2015, Augusta Health provided over $30 million in charity care within our community, and Certificate of Public Need helps protect the hospital's ability to continue to do that.
Anybody else have comments?
Well, I mean, to be, I'm just trying, in the simplest of terms, you've got largely, arguably, a community organization, such as the hospital, gives away $30 million worth of free services to folks that can't afford it. You don't turn people away at the emergency room. You take care of them, you get them well, and they move on with their life. So then, there's for-profit entities that want to come in and, and siphon off all the stuff that you do make money off of. Well, you can't give away $30 million worth of free services and then not be able to cover some of that loss with the more profitable mechanisms. So to have for-profit companies coming in and siphoning off and cherry picking off of our community, which your organization provides in excess of $30 million annually in care, just seems crazy to me. So I certainly intend on supporting the resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Marks, is there any of it up for you, or would you still prefer to hold off? I mean, this is something that we've been talking about for some time with the hospital and...
Well, proceed on.
Well, I don't like to come up and try to vote on something that I don't think we have the proper information to do the vote, but if that's where you are...
Well, I'm, I say, go ahead and proceed, you know. I think it's, consensus appears to be, and council wants to support it, so let's go ahead with it.
Well, I, you know, have to agree with what information we received and listening to some people in the healthcare field, it's, it seems like it puts it at an uneven playing field, because they can come in and cherry pick the, the people with the good insurance and take care of it and turn away the ones that y'all can't turn away, so, basically.
That's kind of my...
All right. Then is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, four and one against. It carries. Item 7B is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or the mayor to receive real property interest on behalf of the city of Waynesboro for the calendar year 2017. Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual exercise that the council undertakes. The reason for this is there is a requirement for property interests to be accepted by an affirmative act. The reason for that is when the liabilities for the underground petroleum storage tanks started to manifest, there was transfers from private individuals or corporations to governmental entities to try and avoid the liability for those cleanup activities. One of the good examples I can give you as far as why this type of resolution is good for the council to adopt would be the Chatham Draining Project that we had last year or two. If we would have to go forward and have council accept all of those real property interests, in that case being easements, for every project, we would be having quite a bit of activity at a lot of council meetings. This is something that I think is reasonable, that leaves it in discretion of the city manager and mayor as to whether or not the property interests that are being offered are acceptable and are in the best interest of the city. So, we would recommend that the council approve this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this matter?
I would just ask that prior to the acceptance and receiving of real property over that calendar year of next year, that the council be made available through at least email correspondence prior, I think, 24 hours prior to the action, so that if we do have any comments or concerns, that we could share them with, with the mayor or city manager.
And I have a comment that all the times that it's been in effect, that I've been on council, they've always made the opportunity to give me a call and tell me what their intentions were, so I appreciate that, and assure that they will continue.
Right.
Thank you.
Just through codification process to throw that out.
So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five o. Item 7C is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing an incentive package to support the construction of a Virginia Museum of Natural History campus in downtown Waynesboro. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, the council considered this resolution and information a year ago this time, given that we have two new members and that the work in pursuit of a Waynesboro campus for the Virginia Museum of Natural History remains active. I think it would be helpful and beneficial to the cause to have this council confirm or reaffirm its support for the project, highlighting certain notes that it's estimated that the center would attract between 45,000 and 85,000 visitors a year. That includes both residents in the region and visitors to the valley and tourists traveling on the Blue Ridge Parkway and the Skyline Drive. The total job impact could be up to 20 jobs, and that would be direct and indirect job creation. But obviously, this is an important opportunity that the city and our Economic Development Authority have been working closely with the, excuse me, the museum representatives and their board, and so I expect that this year, the board, excuse me, the museum will be requesting funding for engineering and architectural services to perhaps phase that project and hopefully create a more achievable opportunity for the General Assembly to fund the project. But this simply confirms the city's previously stated commitment and incentive program to establish a newly constructed campus in downtown Waynesboro.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Are there any questions of Mr. Hamp?
I would just ask that the resolution include the specific dollar amount that we're requesting, for, again, if the museum's approach is to articulate a specific dollar amount, I think that should be reflected in the resolution.
Okay. Is that...
Yes. I think we can incorporate an amendment on the final version.
Yes, that's been asked for by council, and that could certainly be included.
Okay. Anything else? So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution with the amendment putting the amount?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five o. 7D is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing a city manager to purchase real property 1018 West Main Street for municipal or school purposes. Mr. Hamp.
So, you're, the council should be aware that I've entered into a contract to purchase that real property located at 1018 West Main Street. We anticipate that the property will have value both during and subsequent to the school renovation project. The current assessed value is $184,700. Purchase price is $176,000. The resolution is necessary in order for me to complete the purchase of the property.
Are there any questions concerning this matter, council? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries five o. Item 8 is to receive a presentation from deputy city manager of the city's quarterly financial report. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you've been provided the city's FY 2017 first quarter financial report for the period ending September 30. Report details revenues and expenditures for the general fund and the enterprise funds. Fund summary is provided with supporting departmental detail. The supporting detail provides an account description, the FY '17 original budget, the FY '17 amended budget, and the FY '17 first quarter actual expenditures or revenues, and then a variance, which is the remaining fiscal year balance, and then finally, the percentage of funds spent or collected. With one quarter of the year elapsed, the city's total revenues, expenditures, and general fund and enterprise funds were at or near 25% within, or within reasonable and explainable limits. In reality, you shouldn't expect that all the revenues and expenditures would be precisely 25% because the revenue collection expenditure activity isn't distributed evenly throughout the budget year. My examination, Mr. Prevett's examination of the quarterly report would indicate that we're tracking as budgeted. I would note two items of perhaps interest. One is that in the first quarter, we've paid off the debt on the Town Center Incentive Program, which is something I think we've talked about for a number of years now, that when that occurred, that there would be nearly $800,000 of debt service relief. And then, the other thing is just to be aware of, and it would not be something that you could glean from the first quarter report, because it has to do with sales tax revenues, that we received the state, our portion of state sales tax revenue on about a two-month delay, so the funds that were collected in July, I'm sorry, in August, in September, we don't receive until October and November, so they're not in the first quarter. However, we do, we are aware of those numbers, and we're tracking just a little bit behind on state sales tax, and that's a big part of our budget, and it's not something that necessarily be alarmed about, but it's something to be aware of. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Shaw? No action is required on that. Item number 9A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $10,000 in state drug seizure funds for transfer to the general fund to provide for document scanning and digital storage services for the police department. Mr. Hamp.
Unless there are questions from council...
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. This ordinance will be considered at the next regular business meeting of the city council. Item 9B is to consider appropriating a portion of the school facility maintenance reserve in the amount of $176,000 to the general fund for the purchase of property for municipal or school purposes. Mr. Hamp.
So, I think it's important to note first that this, consideration of this appropriation ordinance will be an exception to our normal process, and council will be asked to consider and adopt this ordinance effective this evening as an emergency procedure in order that we may close on the property by the end of the current calendar year, and anticipating that we may not have a second meeting in December. Having said that, this appropriation ordinance supplies the necessary funds to acquire the property at 1018 West Main Street.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? If not, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five o. Number 10 has been taken off tonight. We have no people for appointment. Number 11, communications correspondence. Mr. Hamp? Mr. Hamp.
The only item I have is to point out to council that our second meeting in December would be scheduled for December the 26th, which is a holiday. And staff does not see any pressing matters that would prevent us from cancel, canceling the second meeting in December if that's the council's desire and approve.
The will of council? Would y'all like to council our meeting?
Move the meeting to the 25th of December? I'm fine with...
You go right ahead.
I'm fine with counseling it.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and council.
We need a motion to cancel since it is a regularly scheduled meeting.
All right. So is there a motion to cancel the 26th meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of canceling it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Hamp?
We have citizens, no, no, sir, I don't. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
If I could just add on, kind of piggyback on to the real property discussion this evening. I've talked to a couple of school board members about, I think, a nice opportunity for us to potentially get together as a group and have a conversation in, in January. And so I would just kind of gauge council's interest in, in doing that. I think it could be a very welcoming opportunity to, to have a discussion about this major capital investment as we move into the new year. Just want to see what you all thought about that.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. If you could take that for January. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Citizens' comment period?
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Then we adjourn.